Okay, now we can call to order our emergency meeting. And if, thank you for everybody being here. We know this is, uh, makes us all a little nervous with what's going on. And if you would, Mr. Commissioner Pickens will lead us in the invocation. And our newest county commissioner, Mr. Terry, will, uh, will do our pledge of allegiance.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Our heavenly Father, we just thank you for this glorious day you've given us, Father God. Father God, we just thank for the opportunity to gather here under these circumstances, Father God. We just ask that the decisions that we make are the best for our citizens of Putnam County and for our, uh, the welfare, Father God. Just be with all the emergency service people, our sheriff's department, law enforcement, Father God, as this storm approaches us, Father God. Just keep us safe in Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we'll have public comment. If anyone has, uh, any public comment? All right. And without that, um, we also would like to see if we have any department heads or commissioners, I mean, not commissioners, constitutional officers that have any comments to say at this time.
Mr. Chair, you have some mayors present with us today from our municipalities that might want to share in the conversation. There's one right there. Morning, Mayor.
Good morning. Mayor Peterson, Brett Peterson, Crescent City. I don't know if you guys were in on the conference call last night with the, uh, with the governor. Um, and he is, uh, really in front of this. He's here to facilitate federal response. He's gonna grease the skids and, and try to get us, uh, as quickly as possible, all the assets that he can. Um, and it looks like some of the monies that should be coming to us, maybe from FEMA for Matthew, have been kind of frozen because of this issue here in Texas. So he's gonna try to campaign to see if he can get those monies released. So, um, I don't know if you guys were in on that conference call, but, uh, I'm really proud of our, our governor, Governor Scott.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Sheriff?
This doesn't pertain to the storm specifically, but, uh, just as a follow-up to a conversation that we had recently regarding an upgrade to our radio system, Director Romey and I have been in contact with, uh, the vendor for the statewide radio law enforcement system. And I would ask that we table that agenda item for now, for Friday's meeting, pending a test of some of the radio equipment. Uh, they've actually offered to provide us with a number of portables that we can actually take out and deploy in the field and test for functionality to ensure that it will meet our needs adequately. Uh, so based on that conversation, I would ask that we table that agenda item for Friday's meeting for now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Um, let's see, no one else? Anybody else out there add anything? Um, I wanna, we have a proclamation. I'm gonna ask my fellow commissioners if you guys had a chance to review it, and if you have, I'd like to offer a motion to accept it. Counsel, I think, is that the order you'd like to see this in?
Um, yeah, actually, let's, let's, um, ask, uh, emergency services up to, to just kind of give you a briefing as to, as to why, um, we're doing this, um, now. Um, I want you to come on up. Before he starts, though, I wanna, um, I wanna, uh, say, welcome aboard to, uh, Commissioner Turner. Um, he did go through his swearing-in ceremony this morning. Um, his appointment was made, uh, official, effective September 1. Um, we'll go ahead and do a, uh, more ceremonious swearing-in once we get through this little Irma issue we're dealing with right now. Um, but I just wanted to go ahead and wel- welcome him aboard. And with that, I'll, I'll let Mr., uh...
Before we say, Mr. Manning, is this a baptism by wind?
It is. It is. Baptism by wind, water, debris.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Turner.
Uh, good morning, Board. Ryan Simpson, interim emergency management coordinator. Um, what I'd like to do is, um, just provide a quick overview of Hurricane Irma. Uh, I did provide a briefing packet to all of you, um, with some information. And this is directly from the National Weather Service in Jacksonville. Uh, but essentially, um, Hurricane Irma is a very powerful category five hurricane. Um, it's currently tracking west, northwest, towards the Bahamas and the Florida Straits. Um, there are increasing chances of tropical storm conditions this weekend. Uh, the main message is, is if you have plans this weekend, you certainly want to reconsider those plans and begin, if not conclude, your preparedness by this weekend. Um, there is also increases of hurricane conditions across, um, parts of northeast Florida by Sunday. So if you look at the timing of the, uh, of the track and the forecast, um, it really looks like Saturday into Sunday is when perhaps northeast Florida may see the largest effects of Hurricane Irma. Um, there's certainly, um, a lot of uncertainty still, however, with this storm. Um, any storm that's, uh, that's this far out, um, which currently is over fourteen hundred miles, um, there's models, there's projections, there's, there's a lot of analysis and a lot of science behind tropical storm forecasting. Um, but again, the, the message that I want to bring is, uh, while this is a very dangerous storm, there is a lot of uncertainty, but regardless, we want to make certain that we are prepared as possible for this event. Um, so when and where Irma takes the northern, northern turn will, will really greatly, um, be impacted by how, uh, how the storm interacts with, um, with the islands as it moves forward this week. Um, the, you know, the, the question that, that I see most on social media is, when is that storm gonna turn more north? And, um, and quite frankly, we just, we don't know quite yet. Um, however, um, because of the size and the extent and the intensity of the forecast of, of the storm, we, regardless of this track, we want to be prepared for any impacts that we very well may see. The storm is approximately four, four hundred miles in size, and so it is a very large storm. Uh, the message right now that we're, uh, we're working very, very hard to get out into the community is, again, one of preparedness. Um, uh, we want, uh, we want residents to, to not only have a, have a plan, uh, for their, for themselves and their family, um, that addresses, um, uh, personal circumstance, whether or not they stay, whether they go, but also addresses having a kid, having the supplies, being able to sustain themselves. Um, you know, we were very fortunate following Matthew that power was restored in the community fairly quickly. And we may not necessarily see that in, in future events, and particularly, um, given what's happened in Texas. Um, a lot of resources are, in fact, still in, outside of our area working. And so, we want residents to be prepared to have the food, to have the water. Um, the recommendation is, um, at least at minimum, three days. We want residents to be able to know how to get information. Our office is pushing out information, um, quite frequently on our social media channels, uh, on the Putnam County Emergency Management Twitter, as well as Facebook, uh, as well as our website. We also encourage residents to register for the county's free notification service by going to putnamalert.com. Um, but again, as this storm makes its way closer to Florida, um, logistics will be increasingly complicated. As you, very all, as you all perhaps, um, know, there's already evacuations occurring in South Florida, and so, uh, it's only a matter of time before we saw our road network and so forth become congested. And, um, uh, our recommendations, uh, of course, is that, um, that we activate the U.C., that we declare local state of emergency, so that we can be prepared, uh, to address the, the impacts of this event.
Mr. Simpson?
And to implement preparedness measures.
Mr. Simpson, can you give that, uh, website again, real slow?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm sorry. It's, um, so the, uh, the county's, uh, emergency notification service, um, requires residents register if they wish to receive email notifications, text notifications. It's absolutely free. Residents just simply need to go to putnamalert.com and then provide their contact preferences accordingly.
Okay. Putnamalert.com?
Putnamalert.com.
One word?
All one, all one word. Yes, sir.
And, and it's important to note that those that registered on that site previously need to re-register because it's a new system, and, and the registration information may not have carried forward. So go ahead and go ahead and do that again. And Ryan, if you could give also the, the phone number for people for, to get information, um, as well, can you also, um, let everybody know at what point, should it get to this point? At what point is the, would the bridge be closed?
Okay. So with regard to, uh, a phone number, which residents can call to get more information, um, residents are, if they have questions, uh, may contact our emergency operations center main line at three eight six, three two zero three seven nine. Um, so with regarding...
Seven nine?
Yes. Again, that number is, uh, three eight six, three two nine, zero three seven nine. Soon, our intent is to activate our call center to specifically, uh, have additional staff ready and willing to answer questions that residents may have. However, the number in which I just gave you is our main emergency operations center number.
Ryan, if you could explain, uh, putnamalert.com exactly what a constituent resident would get information in real time, hooked up to the, you explain what you're, you're getting there as far as the storm's location in, in real time.
Sure. So, uh, information is so important and key during a disaster, particularly emergency management and all public safety partners, um, sheriff's office and others, want to be able to provide residents with timely information as far as all different types of hazards, not just hurricanes. This system was, is established for, for everything from, uh, from sexual predator notifications to, uh, informational notices related to wildfires, um, to, to other types of events that may impact them or their family. And so by registering for, uh, for putnamalert.com, you'll, of course, receive hurricane-related information notices, but also other hazard information as well. Um, if, if the county were to take, uh, specific protective actions, announcements would be pushed out using that system as well. And, um, and so again, uh, it's important that, uh, that residents be able to have information that they need to make decisions to prepare their, their families. And so that's the purpose of the system.
Thank you. That's good stuff.
Any information on the bridge, when it may close? I know that's the, um, highway patrol that makes that determination, but I think there's a benchmark?
Yeah. So we work closely when we activate the emergency operations center with Florida Department of Transportation, Florida Highway Patrol. And so that bridge is their asset. And so we work closely with them. And, um, uh, for, for planning purposes, people just need to, to not have to be concerned by a bridge closure. They need to, they need to make plans in place early enough to where that's not even a consideration as to their need to travel. Because regardless of whether or not they're going over a bridge, or down a county road, or down an interstate, if there's, if there's tropical storm winds, it's really not the time to be out. In fact, we strongly recommend that residents do not attempt to travel during, during such events. And so, um, residents need to make their plans. They need to have, they need to reach their destinations prior to any, um, tropical storm force winds or any, um, major effects of a hurricane.
Thanks. And then, Mr. Chairman, if I could also ask, um, uh, Mr. Tompkins to come up and, and just give a little information on, on, uh, Public Works and, and sandbag availability, followed by, um, Larry Gast, if there's any information he has, um, regarding, uh, solid waste.
Mr. Manning, I'd like to add Mr. Carl to that mix, too, with Mr. Gast. Those are two, um, services that we greatly will be looking for post-storm. So garbage pickup and landfill hours. Thank you.
Good morning. Press Tompkins, Public Works Director. Um, we put sand out yesterday. We put sandbags out this morning. Uh, we put out approximately five thousand bags and split them up between three locations. We have one up at our Chester pit, one at our location, and one down south at our Huntington pit. Uh, they're going fast. I can tell you, I've got twenty and thirty people lined up. The limit is twenty bags per resident, so, residence. So we're trying to monitor that, but it is an honor system. I don't have availability to have somebody out there monitoring that. So we would ask the residents, please honor that. Take your twenty bags and, and, you know, leave some for other people. But they are going fast. Um, Public Works, we are set up, ready to go. We've got chainsaws all fueled up, ready to go. All our staff is on call. Uh, we work four tens. They are on call for Friday through the weekend. So whatever we get called in from the sheriff's department or fire department, uh, we're ready to go with it. We got, uh, I think port consolidators coming in and fuel up all our tanks, uh, all our equipment, everything. So I, at this point in time, I think we are as ready as we can be with it.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Press, do we have, how many sandbags do we actually have in stock right now?
We have five thousand. We started giving out this morning. I've got another five thousand coming.
So you will have sandbags for the county facilities?
If, yeah, if anybody needs them. I meant, we've already had a couple facilities come by and pick up their twenty bags. So if you need them for...
Yeah, I'm talking about like for the courthouse and, and this facility.
If you need them, please, I think your guy came by last week and picked up twenty bags. Uh, clerk of court came by and got some last week from us. So if you need more, let me know.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But if there's any county facility, I know you've got some low-lying facilities here in town. If you need something, please let us know, and we'll try to take care of it as soon as we can.
Press, when you say at the Huntington pit, so is that, I, I know where the, you know, is it behind the, um, the collection center?
I believe so. We've got it posted on the website. We've got the addresses and all on the website where people can go to get to it. And we've got signs up on the major highways directing them to where the sandbags are.
Right. Thanks.
Hello, Press. I have one more question. Um, I've had an email from somebody on Drayton Island about the possibility, if the hurricane does hit, to lift the weight limit on the Drayton Island ferry, so construction crews and heavy equipment can get to the island. I just wanted to know.
The weight limit has not changed. The, it's still what it, uh, the, the weight. Uh, and all I know is Karen has the sole, uh, right to refuse or to take whatever load she feels safe she can take across. Uh, she works very closely with Clay Electric and everybody else to get equipment over there. But right now, I think about the only thing they can actually take over is one of the small bucket trucks, uh, and, and a few pickup trucks. But they do have equipment already over on the island, what I've been told from Clay Electric. So they're, they're ready to go with it. But if the water gets too high, then Karen can't run the barge because it doesn't line up with the landings. So those people need to take that in consideration. Once that water starts rising, she shuts that barge down and, and has wait for the water. Like in Matthew, we had to wait almost two weeks for that water to go down for the ferry to even be able to run. So it's, they need to prepare ahead of time for that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gast?
Mr. Gast, yeah.
Morning.
We've got our debris contracts, uh, ready. Uh, we're gonna get started if we have severe damage, which I keep hoping we're not. Uh, I'm hoping in the back of my mind that Matthew last year trimmed all the trees for us, so we'll have a lot less to worry about. But then again, that's only a hope, and we can expect the worst. Uh, if it comes directly at us, um, we could be in serious trouble because we still have not been reimbursed yet from Matthew. And that's one point two five million dollars that's been outlaid. And if we have that again, that's gonna be two and a half million dollars that's sitting out that there's no budgeting for. Um, we will do what's necessary. Uh, we'll try to save the landfill before they leave, before it gets too bad. Uh, we will have it up and running as soon as it is physically able to. Uh, the debris sites have been approved, so, by D.E.P. So we will have those open and running as soon as we are able to get them open. If they're underwater, we may have to wait a few days to get it going. If we have bad erosions or washouts or damage at the landfill, we may have to bring people in as soon as possible and may have to delay the start. But as soon as that is repaired, where everybody has access, uh, we will be open and probably be maintaining extended hours if the board so wishes.
Mr. Chairman, I could, Mr. Gast, um, so your personnel, much like Public Works, will be on call, um, at your beck and, so to speak?
Yes.
All right. So if we have, say, if it skirts the coast, much like Matthew did last time, is it realistically reasonable to see the landfill open, bar a major washout on our, our pit?
Yes.
Access road?
We will be open, uh, when the weather allows. We, we just can't operate during a torrential downpour.
Well, I understand that.
And the high winds and stuff. But, but, once the all-clear is given, uh, we'll go in, we'll make sure that everything is operational. When everything's operational, we'll open the gates for business.
I think what happens with our constituency is they, reasonably from their employers, have a day off to get their family back in and this sort of thing. And I think most folks try to get to the landfill and get that work done because they gotta get back to work the following day. And, um, I had a lot of calls after Matthew, people trying to get into our landfill. And of course, it was really wrecked. You did a good job getting it back together, but I hope that we can get in there fast because I'm, I heard the reasons why they need to be there the day after the storm and that sort of thing. So we can accommodate, accommodate those folks. I'd like to do so.
Okay. And, um, we'll have to make a decision, and the board would have to decide if they are going to waive the tipping fees again for storm debris.
Well, I hear our congressional delegation is working real hard to get our payment you just spoke of a minute ago. Um, Lord, we're hit again, you know, hard with this hurricane. I, I don't know where we at, we'll be at, at the federal level. I mean, it just, it seems devastating. But basically, you're saying our vendors, uh, they can't give us so much credit. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
They're not gonna come grind the stumps, are they? They're not getting paid.
They're, they're not gonna do anything, but we will, you know, I cut money out of what I was scheduled to do last year to pay the vendors. And I'll have to do that again this year to pay the vendors. Um, you know, they have to get paid. They're...
Is there anything we can do as a commission to, you know, we're in contact with Congressman Yoho's office. Uh, he's working for us, as well as our, on the Senate side. Uh, I don't know.
The latest information that I've seen is that FEMA is tapped out, pretty much, that Congress has to raise their budget levels in order for them to make the payments for Matthew. And they're going to have a lot of competition getting those payments with Harvey and this one. So there's going to be a lot of people vying for that money. I know with Charlie Jean and Francis and oh, four, that, uh, it took me almost three and a half years to get the money.
Well, if we get to the point, Mr. Gast, that we're overwhelmed as a county, uh, we can't have a, a toxic situation in our neighborhoods, please sound the alarm, and we're gonna have to come up with an alternative plan to deal with, uh, you know, the garbage and particularly environmental, uh, type garbage, you know, where we don't make people sick.
Well, Daniel has been, been good about, uh, with Waste Pro.
That's why I wanted him up here. Come on, Daniel, don't be shy. I want...
He has been excellent at keeping his, uh, vehicles running, getting the regular service for garbage pickup going. Um, unfortunately, a lot of people expect him to be picking up the storm debris, but that's not in his contract to do.
Well, listen, if you would, Daniel, come on up and, and explain what your company's responsible for as far as pickup. We gotta get you on the record. We can't hear you from back there. Mr. Chairman, while he's walking up, could I ask Mr. Gast?
Yep. You can.
So do you think that, um, that they're gonna pay first in and first out when FEMA's refunded, or are they paying other than first in and first out? That's a hard question, man.
That's a question I can't answer.
I talked to, uh, the FEMA regional administrator this morning in Atlanta. Uh, the appropriations that Congress is voting on as we speak, the almost eight billion dollars, part of that's gonna go to help with the Matthew and the other storms that they have to start those processes of payments along with Harvey, uh, and then the additional appropriations as it goes. So although, right now, today, it's, it's on hold, unless it's an emergency protective measures, those, those were, uh, not put on hold. But as that process moves forward in Congress, you know, I fully anticipate those. So, yeah, it's gonna be a little delayed, but I think, you know, that's gonna open up as we go along.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask Mr. Gast one last question. Um, I've heard conflicting reports, maybe you can clarify for, um, for our citizens, whether they should or should not be doing any tree trimming and putting those out by the road at this point in time?
I would recommend that they don't, uh, do additional trimming unless it's something that's gonna be damaging their property, and then hopefully secure it because we are on an every other week pickup, uh, by contract for yard waste. And if you cut the limbs down and stack them out, it may be next week before they're picked up. It depends on what your cycle is. And if you pile a lot of them out, um, gotta make sure they're the right size and everything else for Daniel to pick up because we're not, we don't have a contractor in to pick up storm debris because we don't have any storm debris right now to, to pick up. So that would be your regular routine maintenance, which Daniel picks up on an every other week basis for all of the county. Now, there has been some confusion today. Um, I guess that the city of, um, Palatka, which does their own collection, asked everybody not to put out. If you did have it out, to call them, and then they send their vehicle around to, to try to pick it up. But, uh, because we were getting lots of calls today, uh, saying that, you know, I need my stuff picked up. I put it out. And so, well, we pick it up on your regular scheduled day. We don't have anything. And I said, well, I saw this, and, and we found out it was posted on City of Palatka's Facebook page, I believe is what it was.
While airing on this, Mr. Chairman, while airing on the side of caution, I think we need to just tell everybody that as much as possible, don't put that stuff out. You're talking about projectiles. Not a matter that we got to pick it up, or it may get scattered around a little bit. It may go shoot into somebody's house or something.
Well, luckily, um, as many of y'all know, during the, the Charlie, Francis, and Jean, uh, three hurricanes within six weeks of each other, all of the debris was not picked up after Charlie. Because two weeks later, we had Francis, and then two weeks after that, we had Jean. And that debris, that yard waste, basically stayed where it was. It did not blow around. The way limbs are designed, they, they have a tendency, if they're airborne, with they break off of a tree, then they can carry because the wind will get them. But if they're laying on the ground, the worst thing that they do is, is they'll tumble till parts of the stems or, or log section digs into the ground, then they kind of just stay anchored. And it's like, you know, if you stand up in the wind, it'll blow you over. But if you lay flat on the ground, you're safer. Uh, the landfill...
We happen to get a little mini twister or something out of it, though. It'll pick them up and chuck them.
It'll pick it up. But with a, with a twister, you're, it'll take the trees, the limbs that are on the trees and, and everything else. And there's not much we can, we can do about that.
No.
But the landfill will be open as soon as we can physically get it because we realize and we know that if you don't have a place to take the stuff, it's just gonna sit. So with, that is a primary factor for us, is getting it o- open and operating. Uh, right now, we have been hauling this week leachate to try to get the levels down as low as possible. low as possible, so that we'll be able to operate, because if we lose power, Clay Electric's pretty good at getting us back up and running, but if we lose power, we have no backup generators or anything like that to operate. So, we're trying to be proactive and get our heads down, make sure that we're set in case we have no power for the pumps and everything to work for a few days, that we'll be able to, to go ahead and continue.
Now, for, for everyone, you'll be open through Saturday, correct?
We will be open through Saturday unless the winds get to a point where it is unsafe for my employees to get home. I have to shut down in time for the employees to be able to get back to their residences.
Of course.
And generally, generally, my standard has been if the winds reach 35 mile, mile an hour sustained winds, I send everybody home and we shut down operation. Because it's now to a point where even if somebody brought it out with that, you know, somebody dumps their pickup truck, I'll be chasing it, you know, quarter mile down the road to try to, try to get it back in the landfill. When you get to that 30, 30 to 35 mile an hour sustained winds, we have to be shutting down, closing the gate, locking up, securing it, and leaving. During Matthew, I was out in the trailers at the landfill. That's where I rode out Matthew, so that I could see where the rain was, where the water, because that's our major obstacle is water, because we are a hill. And when it rains a lot, it picks up speed going down the hill, and then we end up with the washouts and severe situations doing that. So, the, the wind during the hurricane, we have everything covered with dirt, so we're in pretty good shape. But the water is what causes the erosions and the washouts and the overflow of the stormwater systems, and that's the big concern that we have, because if we can't get to the landfill, we can't throw anything away. So, we've already got materials stockpiled, ready to go. Luckily, I've got several thousand tons of crushed concrete that we got when they tore down the Florida Power and Light Plant in East Palatka, that I can use for road bases up on the hill. And even if that washes out, it shouldn't be too long for us to get it back up and going. We basically had the landfill up and running after Matthew, the very next day. I brought people in as soon as it was safe to get out, they started the work repairing, getting everything set for the people to get in, and we opened up and they were there.
Good deal.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Larry.
Pull that microphone, Larry.
The convenience centers, I assume you will open those up as soon as you can after the storm? And will they take storm debris and will they be charged?
They, they will not take storm debris at the convenience centers. We have no way to handle that. We do not have the staff to be hauling 12, 13 loads a day. The maximum loads we can haul with the two drivers that we have is three from Huntington and four from Menderlochkin. I mean, that's seven loads a day is all we can get, and right now, we're pretty well swamped with people doing their cleanup ahead of time. We will take the garbage, that's the main thing, because that's the imminent public health danger, is, you know, their refrigerators went out, you know, it's, they've got food spoiling, they've got to get rid of it. Those can go to the convenience centers. That's what that's there for, is to get rid of the garbage that everybody has associated with loss of power.
Pull the microphone closer to you, just, you know, pull it to you.
I can get closer to it.
It's too far forward. Okay. With that being said, though, the confusion lies with storm debris only going to our main landfill, the central landfill here in Palatka. So, they lean to Waste Pro for your bi-weekly pickup. Can you explain what will be picked up and what not there, Daniel?
Just the normal yard maintenance. I mean, the storm debris, like Larry said...
If you would explain what "normal" is, is that we have enough confusion with that every week, and now it's only, it's going to get complicated even further when folks expect you to pick up the storm debris, which you are not responsible for.
Yes. If it, if it blew down in the storm, that's, I mean, we, we, we help, I mean, because the, the FEMA contractors don't go down some of the private roads, so we try to help the citizens, you know, and get what we can get. They have to understand, we get it.
So, is it safe to say that a constituent should separate their storm debris from their normal yard debris?
Yes.
Two different things.
It's hard to separate, I mean...
So, yard debris is cut into, what's the maximum length? Four feet?
Four feet and four inches in diameter.
Okay, so anything longer and bigger around needs to go in the storm debris pile, separate from the yard debris pile?
Sounds good to me.
You're going to have to put me on the payroll, keep talking.
The storm debris contractor will pick up everything.
Yes.
And they don't differentiate if it's piled out on the public right-of-way, they will pick it up. And they will not mix C and D and yard waste or anything else like that, because they're only allowed 0% C and D in vegetative debris, and only allowed 5% vegetation and C and D debris by the FEMA regulations. So, if you mix the two together, the contractor will not pick it up, you've got to have the distinction.
You're using acronyms for the public, so you've got to straighten that out.
That is construction debris you're speaking of.
That's correct, construction demolition debris. If, if you have your docks that got tore up or the siding on your...
Docks and roofs are what we're dealing with.
Docks and roofs, and that material has to be piled separate than your storm debris from vegetation. Vegetation goes one place, the construction demolition debris has to go to a landfill. The storm debris can be taken to one of the temporary sites that we have approved by FDEP, and there, they can store it indefinitely because it's, it's vegetative matter.
Let's hold it right there, make sure we get this right. Mr. Oliver from the Palatka Daily News is with us. Will it be reasonable to see if that's in the paper explaining the difference between yard debris and then construction debris and then storm vegetation debris? Will you be sure to explain all those? Because it, it is crazy post-storm how much confusion can lie, but if we get that communication line out early through all of us, we'll be, we'll be in good shape. You guys do any public service announcements?
No.
No?
Just did.
They were really relying on you now, Brandon. Okay.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I just wanted to let everybody know, Public Works does not pick up storm debris. We've already got numerous phone calls this morning. After the storm, when winds get below 45 miles an hour, we will send our crews out. Our main function is to clear the roads. We cut and drop, we don't pick debris up, that's for the storm contractor to do. Our main function is to get the roads open so people can get to where they need to be. So, I just want them to understand, it doesn't do any good to call Public Works after the storm, because all we can do is refer them to sanitation. So, I mean, we don't have facilities either to pick storm garbage up, we're trying to say, we're trying to get the roads open.
Okay, right. Chief, you had something to add?
Thank you. On the fire rescue side, the fire, we're going to have chainsaw teams with some small equipment out like we did in Matthew. I don't know if everybody realizes what we did in Matthew, but the, all of the fire departments have chainsaws. As soon as we got a report of a tree down or something across a road, or, you know, impacting somebody's home where they're, they may be trapped in there, we're sending the crews out, they're going in, seeing what they can do. Press's folks are right there with us. We're, particularly on the roads, our main focus is to get those roads open, and as Press said, we're cutting and tossing, we're not totally cleaning everything up, but our main focus is rescue and being able to get the emergency crews, whether it's us or law enforcement, to wherever it needs to go, but also, the power companies coming in, hopefully right behind us, to start repairing power and all that. They can't get through, you know, areas where trees are down and roads are closed and all that, so the quicker we can get those roads open, the quicker we can get the power on, which is the ultimate goal, is getting everybody back to, to some normalcy. So, that's our main focus that we're going to be working on.
I just want to add, I was out with Chief yesterday, and he is ready. He is sitting good, he's got all his equipment ready, fueled up, ready to roll, which was a good feeling.
We've been working for the last seven days, we knew the storm's coming, we didn't know exactly where it was going, but Irma is, is a very, very dangerous storm. Irma's going to be, already is one that's in the record books for the second most strongest or tied for second ever in the Atlantic Basin. There's only one other that I'm, I've, I've seen the data on, that Allen in 1980 was, I believe, 190 mile an hour winds, Irma's 185. I don't think anybody's going to quarrel about five miles and who gets to be number one, particularly with the track that it's on. Wherever it hits, Miami Metro Day, Monroe County is, the state has C-130s down there evacuating the hospitals now. We're, they're flying patients out, trying to get everybody totally out by tomorrow. Miami Day, there's already evacuations in South Florida, so wherever it hits initially, it's going to be utter devastation, there's no way around it. I don't think anybody has seen a storm with this size, this intensity, and this well-defined storm that we're facing now, which is why we want to be very proactive, as Ryan said, and making sure we're ready. We have all the tools in place that we can seamlessly keep moving and not have to stop and, and try to get something done to, to accomplish something. It's not going to be, we've got to go big, we've got to go fast, to make sure that we're, we're doing the things that we've got to do.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Sheriff Deloche just left, but I wanted to ask, I'll ask you if you can communicate, our homeless population, we did not talk about, but isn't that normally law enforcement, both city police and all our municipalities, will direct those folks to our Red Cross approved shelters?
Correct.
That's all standard business, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
And we, through the various aid organizations for those, they, they know who, you know, the, the ones that are out there quite frequently, so...
What about the hardheads that refuse them to leave the dangerous area? What do we do with them?
If we do an evacuation, you know, if it becomes, becomes necessary, we're going to do announce and highly suggest that everybody leaves. If you decide you're staying in your own home, we're going to take the appropriate information, so we'll have the statistical data for, for later on, but, you know, it's, it's, as, and as Mr. Manning talked about with the bridges, the bridges are state assets, as Ryan said. FHP will be monitoring the bridges. If they decide to close, that's going to be a state DOT decision. We, at the local level, do not make that decision. But I can tell you, I'm not putting any of our first responders out there to tell somebody, you know, when the winds are 100 mile an hour, you probably shouldn't go across this bridge. If you're going to be foolish, you're on your own, so...
Thank you, Quinn.
Thank you.
One other point, if I may, a concern about this one is the fact that Harvey hit. There's a tremendous amount of resources, as there should be, out in Texas, but wherever this one hits, we were very fortunate, if you will. I don't know if y'all remember, but we had almost 400 power crews sitting at the fairgrounds as part of our plan, part of FPNL and Clay Electric's plan, to have things pre-staged. Those resources are not as plentiful as they were back in October. Those resources have already been deployed to, you know, to Texas and Louisiana and all that. Not to say that Florida Power and Light or anybody's going to let anybody down, but we also need to be realistic, and when you've got resources coming from out of state, you know, and they're already somewhere else, it, it, it's hard to get additional resource.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Quinn, what about, you talk about the homeless, the shelters, how many, do you have a list of the shelters, approved shelters that are in Putnam County?
Yes, sir, we've got the list of the approved Red Cross shelters on our website, it's on the county website. It's on, as we open those, as it becomes necessary, we certainly will put it out on Putnam Alert to say, you know, this shelter, that shelter, those are open. So, it's still premature on where and when and how many shelters, because the track's still...
What about our radio and print media? Your services cover those also?
Yes. We've had staff at all of the radio stations talking to the paper and everybody for the last several days.
Okay. One more, I had somebody, in Crescent City, we pretty much are out of water already, and I had somebody ask me, you know, when would water come? I mean, at what point would, I guess it would be, you know, to where FEMA would bring in water or anything like that?
That would definitely be post-storm. They're going to have to be prepared for at least three to four days of being self-sufficient. The retailers, Walmart's been out, you know, all of the retailers have been out, but they're doing a very good job of restocking. We've, we're out of some gas areas last night, they're already back up and running because they got replenished over, overnight, so just keep checking. There may be, the resources are coming in, and the, the private sector's doing a very good job of keeping the, you know, that chain, those trucks moving, so...
You know, Bill, I wanted to throw out there, too, that if you can remind people, freeze what you can, you know, bag it, bottle it, put it in the freezer and freeze it, and that'll keep your freezer actually working longer, you know, to keep your stuff cold.
And a lot of folks, thank you, a lot of folks also forget about medications. The governor's already exist, and, and his staff have implemented the, the medication protocol so that you can get longer than 30 days prescription refills, so now is the time to do that and make sure that your prescriptions, you know, you have sufficient prescriptions for at least 90 days post-storm, so... And on the good news side, we've already been declared, passed out, that came late last night, the president has declared all 67 counties in Florida as a emergency, for emergency protective measures, which is what we're talking about now, moving resources, gearing up, getting shelters in place, all of those sorts of things. So, that is very fortunate, during Matthew, we had to wait almost three weeks to get that declaration, and there was a lot of debates on that, but we ultimately succeeded and, but we've already got a declaration, so that's, that's a positive thing. Also, if we don't get hit, or we get hit minimally, with the resource shortages that I, I see out there or anticipate, we're going to need to be able to go help, you know, Miami Day, if they get a direct hit, or any of the South Florida counties, they're going to need everybody and, and anything. So, anybody who wants to, to help, certainly get with the Red Cross, get with the volunteer agencies for, for those kind of things, but we are already making preparations and planning efforts to contribute if we need to.
That's great.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, before moving on to the proclamation, I would ask that the motion be that, that this board issue proclamation 17-70 declaring a state of emergency due to Hurricane Irma, and authorize administrator to extend that as necessary in the future. These are seven-day declarations, and that just makes it easier, so we don't have to keep bringing it back to you all. If emergency services comes to me and says we need to continue to extend this, that will give me the authority to go ahead and do that.
I'm ready to offer that, Mr. Counsel.
I think Mr. Gass had one more thing just before we do that.
Yes, you mentioned freezers and putting everything in it. For people that evacuate and are gone and lose power and come back and their refrigerators are spoiled, that food has to be removed from the refrigerator and placed in garbage bags, because refrigerators cannot go into a landfill. We had several instances... Uh, we had several instances last year where people didn't wanna clean it out, just took the whole refrigerator with food in it and set it out by the road, baking in the sun for a few days, and then, uh, you know, that could not go into the landfill. So, if, if you're disposing of your refrigerator with bad food in it, the food needs to be removed before the refrigerator can be disposed of.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Just, you mentioned the sheriff, and he, he had to leave. We've been working very closely with the sheriff's office and, and the police departments, but, uh, Sheriff Deloche and I got together. One of the things that, uh, as I showed you last night, we've got several high-water vehicles, excess property, federal, uh, military excess, uh, but he's also got some also, including the MRAP, the armored vehicle that he has, it's, would be a very good asset. He's already offered to provide staff, and we'll provide paramedics to help evacuate or, you know, during the middle, height of the storm if we have to get to people. So, I wanna thank him for the, uh, you know, the partnership that we have, so. And if anybody sees the MRAP out in the middle of the, the storm, it's not necessarily a very bad thing anyway.
I see that thing, I'm running.
Okay, well, with that, we'll move on to the motion to, uh, for proclamation seventeen seventy with the additional of authorizing the admin, uh, the admin to extend it if need be.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion for the proclamation seventeen dash seventy, uh, declaring a state of local emergency due to Hurricane Irma that has potential of producing severe weather, surge, and high wind throughout the county as provided for by chapter two fifty-two of Florida statutes and by Putnam County Ordinance Number ninety-six dash fourteen is codified in section sixteen, Putnam County Code of Ordinances. Also, in addition, I would like to authorize counsel, uh, be able to extend, um, this proclamation and, uh.
Administrator? Administrator.
Administration.
Administrator, yeah, administrator.
And also administration for, uh, additional time as required by the length of the storm.
Okay, we have a proper motion. Just a second. We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
I'll give you a second, but I think what he was asking, Chip, was that we change the language from the county attorney to the county administrator, is what he was asking.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I forget about your second job. Administrator, move my words, please, from counsel to administrator.
And the second has no problem.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, with that, our motion moves.
Before we adjourn today, Mr. Chairman, um, I just want a, kind of a sad moment. We lost a really fine public servant this week, uh, in Robert Revels. I'm sure all of you saw the notice in the paper, but Robert was just a fine example of community involvement throughout his whole life, and he was also an eight-year county commissioner. And, um, with that, I'd just like to, to give a shout out for folks to keep that family in your prayers, and, um, anybody else? Tim?
Absolutely, uh, just, uh, a real gentleman.
Yes, sir, all the way.
A great, uh, community, uh, supporter, uh, any event or activity or need in the community, he was one of the first to always step up and certainly gonna be missed.
I just don't think there was, uh, anything he didn't serve as, you know, but he was still a current member of the Fair Board and, uh, our Soil Conservation Board, our Green Belting Board. Just to give you an example, right up to the day he died, this guy was truly a public servant. We're gonna miss him. There's a big vacuum there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And with that, I'll also add that, uh, Mr. Carl Perry, who ran for sheriff, passed away also.
We got to know him on the campaign trail, another fine gentleman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you, are you getting ready to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Uh, is there any discussion about what our employees can expect, uh, for their work requirements coming up, uh, Friday, Monday, and Tuesday?
Um, we're, we're, I'm, I'm playing it by ear right now. Um, it's still a little too early to make a determination. We have to see where the, the storm is gonna go and, um, have a better idea of what the impacts will be here, um, and when we'll experience those impacts before making a determination. Um, tentatively, and this is very tentative, um, well, we're gonna somewhat see what the school system does, because that's gonna have an impact as well. Um, but tentatively, um, I'm at this point looking at potentially, um, closing, um, county operations, other than EOC operations, obviously, um, and Public Works and our essential needs folks at, um, noon or on Friday. Um, but again, that's gonna really depend on, on where the storm is going and when we think we're gonna see our impacts. I do wanna make sure that we give our employees time to, to do their own personal preparation before the storm and, and before they're gonna be needed out at the EOC as well, so that's, again, tentative, but that's what I'm thinking at this point. Um, we, we do have, uh, some obligations Friday morning, um, as far as payroll and whatnot, and things that folks have to do Friday morning, so that's why I'm looking more towards, um, the afternoon.
Thank you. I did get a, a call, uh, at the first part of the meeting that, uh, the Seventh Circuit has, uh, decided that they're closing court operations on Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, uh, and that they will hold first appearance on Friday morning and Saturday, but not again until the following Wednesday. So, uh, um, that impacts folks that, you know, uh, need access to the courts, uh, so they need to be planning that, uh, for those three days, they will not have access to the courts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, as I see it, so you're not sure yet about Monday?
No, again, I, I wanna see, when we get a little bit closer, so we have a better idea of where it's gonna track and what the impact is gonna be on us. I mean, it could, it could still go out, you know, out in the Atlantic, so, um, or, or still go out in the Gulf and, and head north. It's still just a little too early to make that call, and I wanna make sure that, um, you know, I wanna make sure our employees can be prepared and deal with it at a personal level, but I also wanna make sure, um, that we're providing the service to our citizens that we need to.
Okay. Uh, yes, Chief?
Anyone that wishes to help, please give our office a call. We need shelter staff. The school board does an excellent job with, obviously, staffing shelters, but when you get a lot of people, you need more help. Uh, the Red Cross, like I said, is taxed and, you know, probably going to have minimal, uh, staffing available, so resources, personnel resources are, are something that we, I definitely see we may need, so please give us a call if you, you know, if you don't have something and, you know, you're certainly interested in helping, we can certainly have a, a role for you to play.
Right, and would you reiterate the phone number that they need to call?
Uh, three two nine oh three seven nine.
Okay.
The main EOC number. You don't have to have training. We'll be glad to do some just-in-time training to, to get you right up to speed pretty quickly, so.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, then this meeting's adjourned.